Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganeck Communications. Meganeck offers a wide array of internet services.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, April 22nd, 2024, and it is exactly 6:30. I'm going to ask two favors. One, please silence your cell phones. Please check them and make sure that they are silent. And if anyone here is either audio taping or videotaping this public meeting, please notify me as the chair. Thank you. And the placement and operation of the recording equipment must not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. And I would ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight, we do have a proclamation for the Newcomers Club of Falmouth and their 40th anniversary, and I would ask Select Board Member Douglas Brown to please read the proclamation.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Proclamation. Whereas the Newcomers Club of Falmouth was founded in 1984 by Marie Feeney, who has recently moved to Falmouth, who had recently moved to Falmouth, as a way to meet people and form new friendships, and whereas ten women attended the initial meeting in Marie's living room, the club quickly expanded, adding members, including men, social events, and activities. And whereas the club has grown to over 700 members with more than 70 opportunities to connect, including kayaking, hiking, book clubs, singles clubs, sunset sails on the Island Queen, evenings at the Commodores baseball games, programming to inform and educate members about the community, and whereas the Newcomers Club of Falmouth also provides a source of volunteers for the town of Falmouth by hosting a volunteer fair where local organizations present opportunities for club members to give back to the community, and whereas the Newcomers Club of Falmouth is a social club that welcomes and affirms the diversity in our community, and whereas the purpose of the club is to create opportunities for members to foster friendships through social events, programs, and activities to increase their knowledge of the community, and whereas the Newcomers Club of Falmouth is open to individuals and couples who have moved to town in the last five years or who have had a recent life-changing event such as retirement, divorce, or death of a partner. Now, therefore, we, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski III, Douglas C. Brown, Angelay Scott Price, and Robert P. Muscally, as Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim 2024 as the 40th anniversary of the Newcomers Club of Falmouth. In witness thereof, we have heron two set our hand and caused a great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 22nd day of April, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here from the Newcomers Club to accept the proclamation? Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Okay, we're going to move into recognition, and actually, I would like to start tonight. As many of you may know, tonight at sunset begins Passover, and it feels a little bit insensitive that we are having a Select Board meeting during Passover. So I reached out to Rabbi Lieberman, who was gracious as usual, and I certainly apologized for conducting a meeting on Passover, and I also committed to trying to prevent having this happen again in the future. So I just want to own that, and hopefully, that will not happen again. Any other recognitions?
I'd like to recognize our animal control officers. I noticed somewhere that it was Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, and I don't know if it was last week or this, but tonight's our opportunity. I happen to have met Molly Mason at a Beach Committee meeting not too long ago, and she was volunteering there to be showing up at the evening because she had heard about the Beach Committee having concerns about animals on the beach, and she committed to working extra hours to go there and patrol the beaches and take an interest, and the Beach Committee was very appreciative. She seems like she's really into doing the job. She's the senior animal control officer, so I think we're pretty lucky to have her. And the second young lady is Chloe Erissey, and she just joined us late last year. The first lady has about, I think, a little more than a year, maybe a year and a half of experience, and this other young lady, Chloe Erissey, is newer, and she's the junior officer, but both seem to be very engaged and qualified, so I think we're on a good track with animal control, and I appreciate their work.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Certainly.
Any other recognitions? Okay, we'll move into announcements. Any announcements tonight from the board?
I have one for, I volunteered to be on that short-term rental working group, and our first meeting is tomorrow afternoon at 4:30 in this room, so if anybody's interested in that subject, it's an open meeting, it'll be posted, or it has been posted, and we'll be discussing just the first overview tomorrow, and then we're going to work on it for probably about a year or so and be hopefully ready for a future town meeting with whatever we come up with.
Excellent.
And one other thing I would mention, unless anybody else has plans to, is on Friday, it's Arbor Day, and we've been invited to go down to the new parcel at Shiverick's Pond that's being developed as a little sitting area. The tree warden invited us there a couple weeks ago, so I'll be there Friday morning. I think it's 10 o'clock.
I will be there as well.
Great.
Any other announcements? Ms. Scott Price?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to announce that the Woods Hole Trad Stroll is Saturday, May 4th, from 10 to 6:00, and that's on Water Street in Woods Hole with artisans and different community members, different events down there that people may want to go to.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, we will move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments will be limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, we'll keep moving. Yes, we will move into committee interviews, and we're going to start with the Cape Cod Commission, Mr. Drewley. I saw him earlier. There he is.
Good evening.
You're before us again.
Yes, hi, John Drewley. I'm here to see if I can be reappointed as Falmouth representative to the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay, as we remember, he was, you were put on already, and your term is up, and now you're going to be put on for a full term, correct?
Yes, and so far, we've had one meeting.
Okay.
So I'd like to go more than one meeting.
Well, I think there's a number of projects that Falmouth's going to be involved in that is going to be coming before the Cape Cod Commission pretty soon, and I think we're lucky to have you there.
Thank you.
Drewley, so I'd make a motion to appoint John Drewley to as Falmouth representative on the Cape Cod Commission with the term expiring April 24th, 2027.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Can I make one short comment?
No. Of course you may.
Okay. One of the things that I found out at the meeting that I attended is that about a year ago, excuse me, the commission partnered with the Association for the Preservation of Cape Cod to study the ponds on Cape Cod, excuse me, and so far, they've taken samples and studied approximately 650 of the 980 ponds that Cape Cod has, and so they may be of some assistance to the group that you're going to appoint later on this evening to study fresh pond. I don't know if they do or not, but it could be some assistance there.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Drewley.
Thanks, John.
Good evening.
Okay, we're going to move into the Cultural Council, and we're going to start with Luke Okoshi Michelle. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you would come up to the podium, is there anything in addition to your application that you would like the board to know about you?
I think that's all I, you guys.
Okay, I have a question for Luke. I would like to know how you balance a 4.0 GPA and how you are involved in sports and in music and the Cape Cod Commission Climate Ambassador Program and the Mass State Youth Climate Ambassador for the Governor's Office. You do a ton in our community. How do you balance it all?
Yeah, so everything I do, I love, and that really motivates me. So at school, I have work periods where I can get some of my work done, and I see it as if I procrastinate during that work time, I'm just taking away time from what I could be doing and what I love. So it's really just loving what I do, so I've been playing violin for 10 years, I've loved every minute of it, and soccer for most of my life, so it's really just loving what I do, so then I can really get everything done.
It's amazing.
That's the best answer there is, right there.
Yes, very well done. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, I'd say I think Luke is the second high school student that's on the Cultural Council, and I think it's really wonderful that we've gotten the students involved, thanks to the chair who's sitting there in the front row and making it welcoming to students at Falmouth High.
Really, really important.
Thank you.
I would just say this is a very impressive resume, especially at this point in your life, so I'm pretty impressed, and I can't wait to see what you do next.
Thank you.
We'll be watching.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd motion to appoint Luke Okoshi Michelle to serve on the Cultural Council to fill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2024.
I'll second Ms. Scott Price's motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, and thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, and secondly, we have Paul Courtney. He's a tough act to follow. Is there anything that you would like to know, that you would like the board to know about you that isn't included on your resume?
I think that what I would say is that the arts, for me, is a, can be a really important connective tissue between people in a community that goes beyond a lot of different boundaries we might have otherwise. You know, we all go to jazz, you know, we all go to classical music, whatever it is, whatever our backgrounds, and I think it's really important, and I'm very happy to know that the town has really supported the arts, and I'm really happy that I retired recently so I can put some time into that, and I'll be helping with the technical parts and with, I'll take pictures at different events, things like that, but I'm really happy to be able to do that.
Awesome. Any questions from the board or comments from Mr. Courtney?
I think the application is complete, and I would move a point appointment. Let's see, where's the, I appoint Paul Courtney to serve on the Cultural Council to fill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
And I'll gladly second for my friend Paul.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Alice. Okay, Fresh Ponds Advisory Committee. Let's start with Kim Comart, please. Kim, is there anything about you that we don't know?
Probably. I do want to say a few things. I'll be really quick. First, I want to thank you for considering me for the committee. I think it's appropriate that these interviews are being conducted on Earth Day. It feels right. Our freshwater ponds are jewels in Falmouth's crown. They need to be protected and preserved for the benefit of Falmouth residents and for the benefit of our children and our grandchildren. I'm deeply committed to the mission of this new committee. I was a founding member of the Deep Pond Preservation Project and a founder of the Falmouth Pond Coalition. I believe the work of this new committee will complement the work of the Falmouth Pond Coalition, other nonprofit organizations, and several town departments. Since my arrival in Falmouth in 2008, I've come to love this town, and I'm deeply committed to the well-being of the town. I'm honored to be considered for the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
Just a question. I know that the committee that we chartered has five members and two alternates. I think we're very lucky tonight to have six applicants for those five positions, and I'm just wondering if, you know, somewhere down the road, because I think the coalition, the committee is going to be very active, if we might want to think about doing away with the alternate members of the committee and having, you know, a full complement of seven members. I don't know.
I think we could certainly reconsider. I think it's appropriate to let the committee get up and get started, and certainly, we would be taking recommendations from, I'm sure, Kim and others to expand if we needed to, and I don't assume that that's a huge process?
Correct. Madam Chair, if I might, I would just add the, I think the proposal came out of conversations with Mr. Comart, and the thinking was a balance of wanting to have more people involved, but also pragmatically wanting to make sure that there's a quorum, and that's where associate members are really handy, because your quorum is five, so you need to have only three of the five appointed members present to maintain a quorum. The role of the associate members, particularly in an advisory committee, that's not like, you know, like Ozony, not a regulatory board where they're formally acting on decisions, they can participate at the discretion of the chair as a regular member, but it provides that flexibility of if there are a couple of regular members missing and an alternate is there, the alternate can vote and help with the quorum. So it was, that was the pragmatism that was the reason for having five and two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly prepared to make a motion to appoint Kim Comart to the committee.
The term ending June 30th, 2027?
For that term, ending June 2027.
Do you want to hold a second to that motion?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I would just comment that I met with Mr. Comart, what was it, a year and a half ago, and we had lunch, and we talked about freshwater ponds and so forth, and he had the idea then that we should have a freshwater pond, and he's done a lot of work to build to this moment, so thank you, Kim.
Sure. Thank you.
I had coffee with him, and he pitched the same idea two years ago.
Probably hit us all.
So we're a little behind, but.
It's been ingested, Stacey.
We're doing it. Okay, any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, William Kerfoot.
Thank you very much for the selectmen to form a pond committee. I do very much appreciate that. Many of you have known that I've spent most of my life involved with studying ponds. I have a degree, PhD degree from Harvard in biology. I set up a company, KVA, initially in 1978, and have been president of that since that time. I'm trying to retire from it at present time, but I wanted to point out that my first 10 years of my company, I was a consultant to EPA on the rural lake projects. We studied lakes in, over 35 lakes in five different states, and then wrote a book on it for general guidance to states for how to manage ponds. So here, under the Dukakis administration, I was involved with 20 ponds on Cape Cod under the Massachusetts Clean Lakes Program, including Ashument Pond, which is right here, and individually, I've probably done reports and studied about 12 ponds in Falmouth itself. I sit on the AEHS, that's the Association for Environmental Health and Science, and direct their organizations with regard to water supplies and lakes and pond areas, particularly over the past 30 years. So I want to take that expertise associated with it and focus in on what is necessary to maintain the ponds in the town. Way back when, with Vicki Lowell as the chairman of the planning board, we took the individual ponds, set up recharge areas, working with the USGS for the ponds in town, and that was back when we're rural. We are not rural anymore. We are a growing town, and we have a lot more needs for development in particular areas. I would like to add my expertise to help in maintaining the quality of the ponds for the future, too. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Questions from the board?
I don't really have any questions. I'm familiar with Mr. Kerfoot's work, and it's incredible resume, so I'm happy to appoint Mr. Kerfoot. Would you like the longest term or the medium-sized one?
Whatever is best. I love the community, so I'm among those two, and wherever I can help with the community, I'd like to serve.
I was thinking of saving the second longer term for Mr. Hoyfelder. If I could appoint you or recommend a term ending 6/30/26, would be okay?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kerfoot. Okay, folks, we're going to move, we're going to keep moving here. I would like to interview William Mebane. Anything you would like to share with the board that we don't know?
No, I think you have my CV there. Been involved with aquaculture and water quality management most of my adult life. Ran the seawater systems at the MBL, balancing nutrition, and I'm an avid fisherman. Most of my career's been spent in freshwater aquaculture here in the States, finfish aquaculture in the States, Cambodia, and West Africa primarily, trying to improve the human condition by improving water quality where the fish grow, so, yeah, I'm honored and interested, and I think there's a lot could be done.
Questions from the board?
No questions. I'm just thankful we have this group of candidates for this committee.
I would move to appoint Mr. Mebane to a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. George Hoyfelder.
Good evening. George Hoyfelder, I'm on your Board of Health, been sampling ponds in Cape Cod for over 40 years, is director of the County Health Department, retired now, semi-pseudo-retired, down to 40 hours and loving it. And my degree, of course, is in aquatic biology. It's my first passion, although most people know me for wastewater. I don't know whether I want to go out on that stroke. So I'd rather go out on some clean water.
Good idea.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I would only comment to thanks to Mr. Hoyfelder for all his many years of service to the town on so many different committees, including the Board of Health and the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan Review Committee, and one of the reasons I feel like it's really, I'm very thankful to have you on this board is because of your knowledge of how the pollutants, what you've seen on the other end of it, so the importance of the work to clean up the ponds is very well tied to the work that you've been doing for so many years, so.
Thank you.
I would move the appointment of Mr. Hoyfelder for a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Can I second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynn Francis.
Is she in here? There she is.
Welcome, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to share that is not included in your resume?
I do believe so. The gentleman earlier was just talking about the Cape Cod Commission and how the freshwater initiative would be very helpful in the work that the freshwater committee would be doing. And funny enough, I am one of the core people that are working in with the Cape Cod Commission for monitoring of the freshwater ponds. I specifically do operations, so I help with like volunteers and stuff like that, but I work very closely with both Julie as well as Sophia, who work really closely with the data and stuff like that. So not only do I have, you know, groundwork experience that I'm going to be working with all the ponds, I also do operations when it comes to cyanobacteria. I am pretty much the one that is looking over the monitoring of the program in addition. So we're looking at monitoring of cyanobacteria in 15 ponds in Falmouth. So probably you guys remember Ashument Pond and how big the cyanobacteria bloom was. I was one of the core people that helped with the monitoring of that, the sampling and the analysis, as well as making recommendations of public health and stuff like that. So that's about it.
Questions from the board? Comments?
I've met Ms. Francis a couple times. She does the conservation monitoring for the 300 Committee as well, is all her other work, so. Very encouraged by her participation.
Thank you.
So we have, which term we have, the June 30th, 2025?
Yes.
Yes. Can we go to motion?
Easy to go.
Okay. Motion to appoint one term ending June 30th, 2025.
And I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Stephen Solbo. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Select Board. My name's Stephen Solbo. Sort of a full-circle moment for me tonight. I'm a Barnstable person, don't hold that against me. I just moved to Falmouth in August. My wife's from Falmouth. We live back in the neighborhood that she grew up in, in Ashument Valley. She's a guidance counselor at Falmouth High School, so we're going to be in this community for a while. Now, I got my career started when I was probably, I was looking at this young gentleman that was here earlier tonight, the teenager, and I started when I was about 15 years old with wastewater and nutrient loading in the Marson's Moles River in Barnstable. It was part of the River 2000 program, which was a high school program that worked with the students, set up an environmental team. We competed in a national competition out in California, and we really started a community outreach program that reached out to all of Barnstable and lasted for about 10 years. I graduated from Clemson University with undergrad in aquaculture, fisheries, and wildlife. Came back, and I was the conservation agent in Mashpee for three years. Went into the private sector, did some consulting, a lot of NEPA projects, NEPA projects statewide and pretty much countrywide, ended up working on liquid natural gas, a lot of large-scale utility projects, and really just kind of a bunch of various environmental. lot of large-scale utility projects, and really just kind of a bunch of various environmental consulting, but focusing mainly on freshwater. But obviously, with growing up on Cape Cod, I had an interest in the coastal environment as well. And then Mr. Mebane back here, I actually had a summer internship with him when I was a high schooler at the marine biological laboratories. So I actually started my aquaculture career with him back, I'm now 40, I'll be 42 this summer, and that was when I was 15. And now we're coming back full circle to a committee here in Falmouth, and both back to where we sort of know what we're doing in freshwater and the health and the wastewater and nutrient loading, the health of the fish, the health of the, you know, the biology, the flora and the fauna. So I'm proud to, and, you know, I'm honored to be considered for a position on this committee to help out this community, because I plan on being here for a while. So, any questions? Feel free to ask.
Any questions from the board?
No, I think we've got more than information than we were expecting. Thank you so much. That was good.
Madam Chair, motion to appoint Stephen Solbo to serve on the freshwater ponds advisory committee as an alternate member for a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're a bit early for the public hearings, and what I would like to do is take the consent agenda out of order and spend the time doing that. Any objection from the board?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and go through the consent agenda. If any board member wants to hold any item, please notify the chair. Licenses. Approved application filed by the Cape Verdean Club Falmouth, Inc., 126 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, for change of officers' directors to all of its all alcohol beverage nonprofit club license. Approved application filed by the Falmouth Yard Club, 290 Clinton Ave., Falmouth. Folks, I need to get through the consent agenda, please. Approved application filed by the Falmouth Yard Club, 290 Clinton Ave., Falmouth, for change of directors, officers, to its all alcohol beverages nonprofit club license. Approved application filed by the Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc., 130 Quisett Ave., Falmouth, for change of officers, directors, to its all alcohol beverage nonprofit club license. Approved application filed by Woods Hole, Inc., LLC, 28 Water Street, Unit D, Woods Hole, for change of manager of its lodging house license. Approved application filed by Rose M. Corp., 286 Grand Ave., Falmouth, for change of DBA to the Wharf, formerly Sopranos Casino by the Sea, of its all alcohol common victor license. Approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Gray Matter Marketing, Cape Cod Brewfest, Falmouth Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Saturday, 9/21/24. Approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Monday, 7/22/24. Sunday, 7/28/24. Approved application for a Sunday entertainment license, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Barnstable County Fair, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Sunday, 7/28/24. Administrative orders. Approved request from the Water Quality Management Committee to apply for a grant preparing comprehensive watershed management plans. Say thank you for them working on that. So noted. Approved request for a variance to the sign code 18432 Off-Premise Signs, Falmouth Art Market. Art Market on Tuesday, 6/25/24 through 8/27/24. Approved a request for a variance of the sign code, Off-Premise Signs, North Falmouth Congregational Church, and a request for a grant of license for the placement of three informational signs on town property. Approved expenditure of $1,500 from the Falmouth Commission on Substance Use Donation Account for the Celebrations After Prom 2024 Event, to be held May 18th, 2024. Again, that's, thank you very much. That's a very important after-prom event. Approved ever-source easement for electric services for electric vehicle chargers at 20 Academy Lane. Approved the petition of NSTAR Electric Company Doing Business as Ever Source Energy for permission to install approximately 120 feet of 1'4" conduit under Town Road near the intersection of Raymond Street. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 111 Jericho Path. Approved the petition of NSTAR Electric Company Doing Business as Ever Source Energy for permission to install approximately 48 feet of 1'3" PVC conduit under Town Road, starting at a new handhold to be labeled 72-17H-B at the base of the existing pole 7217 to newly installed handhold 7217HA on customers' property. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 169 Walker Street.
I'm sure I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Just, if I could just comment, I would like to second the comment about the $1,500 for the Falmouth Commission on Substance Abuse for the after-prom. That's exactly the kind of proactive type actions that we should be taking with that money to keep the kids engaged in positive activities, so. I appreciate that.
They've been doing it for years, and it's an incredibly successful event, year after year.
And they are really short on help for this year, if anybody wants to volunteer.
Mr. Zelinski, you volunteered a bit back.
It was fun, too.
It was. Okay.
Great event.
So we have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we will go back to public hearings. And our first public hearing tonight, it is now 7 o'clock. We have an application for a renewal of a shellfish aquaculture license, number A17-02, Paula Miller, Ny's Neck Oysters, 3-acre site in Buzzards Bay, 600 feet from the shore southwest of Fiddler's Cove and northeast of Ny's Neck. Mr. Zelinski for the notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGLC 130 and 57 on the request of renewal of a shellfish aquaculture license, A17-02, by Paula Miller, Ny's Neck Oysters, 175 Chester Street, North Falmouth, Mass., 02556. Request for this license was received on March 15th, 2024, in the office of the Select Board. Said hearing will be held on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 6:45 in the Select Board's meeting room, Town Hall, located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Application is for renewal of a shellfish aquaculture permit for one location in Buzzards Bay, containing three acres, with a depth of 12 to 16 feet and roughly 600 feet from the shore, west-southwest of Fiddler's Cove and northwest of Ny's Neck, more specifically as follows: to grow eastern oysters in cages in soft mesh bags anchored to the bottom of the ocean with an elevation of no more than 42 inches off the ocean floor. A copy of this aquaculture license renewal application is on file at the office of the Select Board. Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zelinski, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert Mescalley.
So, before we start with the applicant, I just have a quick question. It looks to me like there was a previous license on July 10th, 2017, which had a term of five years. Come on up. And the license expired in 2022. Do I have those dates correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct. Based on our records, the original license was issued July of 2017.
So my question to the applicant is, have you been operating without a license for two years?
No, it was because, due to COVID, that I was told that, because when I came to the Town Hall, they just said, because of the COVID for a couple of years, that not to worry about renewal. And that's what I was told by Diane Davidson. So when I came in this year, and no one had ever sent me any information of saying, you need to renew this license. I came into the town a couple months ago, and said, it seems to me like I think that I should be going before the board for renewal. The farm really didn't even go into operation due to COVID. It was merely delayed by three years, almost. We hadn't really been farming at all. And so we really started this site in 2022. And so, and, and so we, and it was really kind of interesting that we really don't get any notices on, like, when you should come down and renew your license, your yearly fees. There's really not much that is sent out by the town, honestly. So it's kind of up to the farmers to come down and do that.
But you would have a license with a date on it and knowing that it was good for five years, correct?
I wouldn't say I have a physical license. I have paperwork that I realized later on that after 2017, but, like I said, but I get my yearly licenses from DMF and those licenses for shellfishing. And so, honestly, it can be rather confusing. It really wasn't like a clear, concise, because there's other farmers that are told that they don't have to renew their license for 10 years. So it's kind of a little bit of a gray area right now. I did not realize it was up for renewal in 2022, honestly.
A five-year and 10-year. It depends on what you apply for.
There's really not a clear and concise on this.
Do we have different lease terms?
Madam Chair and Select Board Member Brown, yes, there are two. There's a five-year term, license term, and there's a five-year provision, or a 10-year provision. The applicant that you're hearing tonight applied and received the five-year license in 2017. And I did, I wanted to mention, I did have an extensive discussion with the office manager, Diane Davidson, about this file. We went through the records, and there was no indication of any kind of COVID suspension or where the clock stopped running. I'm not disputing necessarily the applicant's statement, but Diane and I had an extensive conversation. And based on the record search through the file, it was issued in 2017 and technically expired five years later.
But there were a lot of things that were just kind of let slide during COVID. I know that. I mean, it was, not saying that I know particularly about this, but I just, in construction, a lot of, like, the license, you didn't have to go for the in-person training. They let that slide. Everything was online. So we made a lot of allowances, I guess, during COVID.
Mr. Mescalley?
I realize the terms are either five or 10-year, but in this circumstance, would we be able to, maybe if the board was willing to approve it, approve it to a term ending five years from 2022 as opposed to five years from now? In effect, three years from now, would we be able to do that, to compensate for the two years that the applicant didn't have a license?
That's a great question. I don't have a solid answer, unfortunately, for you. I could certainly consult with town council. I think it's the board's, Select Board's discretion. I think you would have that option. I can't, I don't think there's anything that would prohibit the board from recognizing that perhaps there's a two-year lapse in in...
But why would we retro, how would that? Well, I don't think we're retroactively applying it, but we're somewhat coming to a compromise that acknowledges that the applicant was, rather than give her five years going forward, if we just gave her three years, it would be, and then she'd have to come back in 2027 as opposed to 2029. I don't think we're retroactively approving it necessarily. We're just granting it for three years instead of five years.
Madam Chair and Select Board Member Mescalley, I'm looking at the actual license letter that's issued by the town of Falmouth and under conditions, obviously, the last page. Term of license is for five years. So I think it's the Select Board's discretion to insert whatever period, whatever term it desires, under those terms and conditions of the license.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Would it be the reason for that, though, just so that the applicant technically doesn't fall into a...
Well, just so that it's an acknowledgement that the applicant, whether, you know, I believe her position and that it was probably just inconsequential and didn't realize it, but I think that's, that way we're acknowledging that something should have been done. And rather than, you know, allow it to go for five years, we'd just be allowing it for three years. I don't see any harm. The applicant would just have to come back two years sooner, but some acknowledgement that what was being done wasn't, you know, completely according to the town regulations. That's all.
I'm sure I disagree with Mr. Mescalley. It seems a little punitive. I'd be willing to vote one way or the other on the renewal for five, personally.
Yeah, I just feel like it's just a bit of a hardship on the applicant, because then it's just that much sooner that she has to come back. And I don't think that she's really done anything wrong intentionally.
And I would agree with you, Mr. Brown. I do think it's incumbent upon an applicant, however, to keep track of when their license is up and to reapply. Having said that, it would not necessarily prevent me from moving the license to five years. But again, I would, it is up to the applicant to watch their licenses.
I think I would make a motion that we approve...
Let's get public comment?
Oh, sorry.
And then talk about, and then close the hearing?
Certainly.
Is there any public comment on this application? Okay, hearing none. I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Now I would move approval of this application as presented for a term of five years from today.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, so it's four to one. So you have been granted a five-year license, and please be sure in five years you come back before the...
I certainly will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to our second public hearing. Mr. Zelinski for the notice.
Madam Chair, Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGLC 130 and 57 on a request for renewal of a shellfish aquaculture license, Alpha 14-01, by Daniel Ward, Ward Aquafarms LLC, 51 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Mass., 02556. Request for this license was received on February 26th, 2024, in the office of the Select Board. Said hearing will be held on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board's meeting room, Town Hall located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Application is for renewal of a shellfish aquaculture permit from a slip measuring 50 feet by 50 feet with a location 41 degrees by 38 feet, 48.86 north, and 70 degrees, 38, 10.28 west, to grow eastern oysters, cohogs, base scallops within the floating upweller system in Fiddler's Cove Marina at all times of the year, in racks that will sit on the ocean floor. Copy of the aquaculture license renewal application is on file at the office of the Select Board. Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zelinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert P. Mescalley.
We have the applicant. Any comment from the town manager? I'll move right to the applicant.
No, Madam Chair, no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Ward. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Any questions from the board on the application for a renewal?
No. Is this your third time renewing?
This particular one? Yes, I think so. I guess the only comment I would make, if I can, is that typically, so it usually goes like 3, 5, 10. And so, I was before you guys three years ago, in 2021, for the one that I had gotten in 2011, that I got for 10 years. So, I mean, obviously, it's your purview, but traditionally, I think this would be a 10-year one for this particular one.
And your application states same, correct? You're applying for 10 years?
I believe, I believe so.
You did. You did.
Again, I mean, it's your purview, obviously, but I think, like you were saying, it kind of reduces paperwork on everybody.
Right.
You don't like coming in front of the board?
I do, and I know, I was just looking. I'm gonna be back here next year for a different one. So I will be back again, so.
Questions or comments from the board?
This isn't the end of me.
No comments, Mr. Ward. Seems like an old hand at this now.
Yes, and it certainly says that we have found you sufficiently qualified in terms of knowledge and experience to operate the shellfish aquaculture licenses. Any comment from the public regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
No, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I had one comment. Just to put the board at ease a bit. Peter was able to double-check general law, and the board does have discretion up to issuing the license up to a period of 10 years. So anywhere between perhaps 3 to 10. It's completely your discretion.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. We close the hearing. Discussion amongst the board? Do we vote to close the hearing? Or we had a motion and a second to close the hearing? All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion?
If I may add, motion to approve the application for renewal of shellfish aquaculture license, number A14-01, Daniel Ward, Ward Aquafarms LLC, 50 by 50 foot slip in Fiddler's Cove Marina.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in 10 years. Okay, we have a third public hearing application filed by Main Street Gallery, 189 Main Street, Falmouth, for a one-day entertainment license to be executed July 10, 2024, from noon to 5:00 PM. Mr. Zalinski, for the notice.
Madam Chair, notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183 Alpha of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto that Main Street Gallery, located at 189 Main Street, Falmouth, has applied for a one-day entertainment license to be executed on Wednesday, July 10, 2024, between noon and 5:00 PM. Hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April 22, 2024, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to the Select Board at falmouthma.gov. For order of the Select Board, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert P. Muscali.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Any comments from the town manager?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I thought I saw Mr. Fox, the applicant.
Thank you very much. This is totally philanthropic enterprise for me. I run a gallery and a real estate office, but we have this huge parking lot and I have all these artists that I never could fit in my gallery. So I've tried to run an event for them, a pop event. I don't charge them. They bring up their own tent. And we ask my tenants to move out of the parking lot for the day, so we have this huge parking lot right over there. And I have arranged to have the Stage Door Canteen Band play for two hours. And I just thought it'd be a great thing to have live music there. I am paying them for their music and I'm also paying hogs and dogs to sell, bring their cartons, sell sodas, and I'm not charging anybody anything. I'm just doing it to have a great event.
Wow.
Sounds fun.
Questions from the board, comments from the board, comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. We just closed the hearing. Hold on one second. Any?
I would. Okay.
Motion to approve the one-day entertainment license as submitted by Main Street Gallery, 189 Main Street, Falmouth, to be executed on July 10, 2024, from noon to 5:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Hope you all could come by.
Have fun.
Okay, we're going to move into business. Business item number one, One Stop for Growth Grant Application. And I believe we have Jed Kornack, our town planner, here, speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Jed Kornack, your town planner. We submitted this request to you so that you can approve both the Planning Department and the Department of Public Works to apply for a $3.3 million grant from the One Stop for Growth Grant Program. As you may know, the One Stop for Growth Grant Program was a consolidation of all the state grant programs that they had, approximately a dozen or so. One of those is the MassWorks Infrastructure Grant Program. That's the one that we'll target. Part of this request here tonight is included is the expression of interest. So that's the first step in the process where we outline specifically what the grant would fund. And then, once approved, they will essentially, the state will funnel us into the appropriate grant program, which we will then submit a full application. So this request this evening is to not only approve that expression of interest, but also to allow us to apply for that full grant, which is due by the 5th of June. Specifically, this application will extend a water main along 151 from its current terminus at Sam Turner Road, will extend it across Route 28 over to Willow's Nest. It will have two benefits, the first being it will create redundancy in the water system. So North Falmouth will have a second, essentially a loop service for the water up there. And then also, it will support the development of a 248-unit mixed residential-type development up at Route 28 and 151.
Questions from the board?
No questions. I think it's a great idea using grant funds for infrastructure, if possible.
Madam Chair, I have a motion to approve the request to submit an expression of interest for the One Stop for Growth Grant Program as presented and to approve the request to submit a full application by the program deadline.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Awesome. Thank you, Jed.
Thank you.
Okay. Business number two, vote to adopt the new LIP application process and review guidelines. We establish the LIP Review Advisory Committee and appoint a Select Board member to the committee. And I'm just going to start, we have Kim Fish here, our housing coordinator, to speak to this. And I, as we are thinking about this, I'd like to nominate Bob Muscali to be on this advisory committee.
Great idea.
So we can get through that when we do the motion, but I'm just asking you, Mr. Muscali, if you'd accept the nomination.
Very happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Tim Fish, welcome.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator. And as you know, I gave a presentation at the workshop you held on March 2, which was a brief explanation of what a local initiative program is. The acronym is LIP, so I will continue to use just LIP, which is what it is. Additionally, I submitted a draft LIP application process and review guidelines for your review and consideration. The guidelines have been reviewed by town manager, assistant town manager, town planner, each of you. Then I presented it to the Affordable Housing Committee. And since it was posted in the Select Board's packet for the March 2 workshop, I received comments from the public. Taking all the suggestions into consideration, I made some revisions to the original document presented to you on March 2. Then I sent that document to town council for her review and she made some adjustments. And now we have the final document that is before you tonight. As part of the packet, I included a version that shows some of the more substantive changes made. To save time, I'm not going to go into all of the changes, but to highlight that the additions and the changes were made for clarification purposes. So tonight, I am requesting that you vote to reestablish the LIP Review Advisory Committee that was originally established in 2007 and it's been inactive. Vote to appoint a member of the Select Board to that committee and then vote to adopt the new application process and review guidelines as presented.
Questions from the board?
I appreciate that you've had all this outreach and I was just reading it this weekend and I was thinking, is it too late to add a couple of lines at the end of a couple of these?
Well, I think that if, correct me if I'm wrong, you could possibly add some and then if approved by the board, with the additions, with the amendments that you made.
Just a couple of things I noticed. One, if I could, land use group. You highly recommend that they meet with a land use group, but it's not necessary that, you know, if they want to skip it, they can. Makes me wonder if perhaps there should be a planning board member on this group? Just a thought. I don't know if that's.
The town planner is part of the committee.
Okay. That's a good point. I guess maybe that's not important then. And then on 1B, should we make mention of rare species habitat as well? Because, address the proposed site and site description to include any wetlands, waterways, easements, conservation restrictions, and any other deed restrictions. Should also include a description of any existing buildings and their uses. Should we consider having a habitat survey or study of some sort? That's one thing I didn't really see noted. I don't know if that would really be included because it says to include wetlands and waterways and easements. But sometimes you don't really have all those exact parts in place and we might recommend a habitat survey or study.
We, well, we wouldn't ask for the actual study done for this purpose. That would be done at the ZBA level.
Okay.
Further down the process, I would think.
Exactly. Yeah.
Because this is just the application. Right? Okay.
Just wondering if we.
Really getting into the weeds is more down the line when they go before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, but it's kind of the heads up.
They can mention it. We can mention it that if it is in that habitat to include that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just throwing these out there in case anything's been missed. And then on 1E, I wonder if we should include design solar orientation?
It's required by the stretch code and I think that's covered in here.
Is it? Okay. As long as you think it's covered. And in the review guidelines, D, add residential deed restrictions. I know that one is not in there. But, and I don't know if it needs to be at this point or maybe later, but it might be a nice part of the policy that even though they might not all be 100% affordable, if we could at least get them to be residentially deed restricted.
What does that mean?
That means that you put a deed restriction on your property, that it will only be rented for residential use and not for short-term rental.
That's not, the state hasn't approved that yet. That's in the Healy's bond bill.
Right. That's a good point. You're right. It's not really, it's not something we can actually add.
Let him finish and then I'll go to you, Mr. Zalinski.
Okay. Where it says Energy Star rating, I would say maybe we should say OR comparable certification in case Energy Star might go away and maybe it already has. I don't remember hearing about it lately.
Which one was that?
That was M. Additional information is for, and again, I apologize. I should have been paying more attention to this earlier.
If that were to change, we could change it at that point, though, correct?
This can be amended at any given point.
Okay.
Are you done, Mr. Brown?
And.
Or do you have another one?
I would think we might want to add P, provides up to 70% local preference for people living or working in Falmouth or neighboring communities. Again, just as a goal. And the final thing is, if we want to maybe add one more thing, would be contain a wider range of diverse affordability, as example, 60 to 100% rather than just a standard 80 or whatever they're targeting. Because I see a lot of these developments, they're targeting one affordability rate. And so we're clustering the same economic group. And I think it would be nicer if we had more diverse economic.
So one of the things, I've already met with someone that is interested in filing a LIP shortly and we have that talk, that initial discussion. And the suggestion I always make is anything beyond the required 25% that the town would really be interested in a tiered AMI restriction. And regarding the local preference, it's not specifically in here because it's something that we do. It's usually addressed at the ZBA level. They usually put that in as a condition of the comp permit. So at this level, we didn't really feel it was necessary to address.
Okay. Okay, it sounds like you got most of them. These are no surprise to you, so thank you.
Mr. Zalinski, I'll go to you and then Mr. Muscali.
So Ms. Fish, for the record, between the application process and the zoning board process, all of those questions would be answered, correct? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Muscali?
Thank you. I thank you for the outreach. But other than the Affordable Housing Committee, I think the strategic plan spoke about getting input on the LIP process with the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. Have they weighed in on these?
The strategic plan said that we should, I'm not sure, about the LIP.
I think it said that we would update the LIP guidelines with outreach to the zoning board, the planning board, and the Affordable Housing Committee. I'm just wondering if the planning board or the zoning board have weighed in on these.
They have not and it wasn't something that was on my radar because for two reasons. The LIP guidelines and the ZBA are two separate entities. It would be really, it would really go through the Select Board and then the zoning board has their own requirements. And then the planning board, Jed has, it wasn't the whole planning board, but Jed has been part of the process. And the reason why there was outreach to the Affordable Housing Committee is because they have to be required by the state that part of the process.
But it is in our strategic plan as one of our goals to update the LIP guidelines with that. So I was just wondering if that had been done. And the only major question I have is, in the pre-application phase, we speak about the project being beneficial to the town. Now, we all want it to benefit the town, but in reading through, I think it's the state guidelines, they use the term consistent with local needs. Might it be better to use that term in the pre-application process so that it would be that the concept plan is consistent with local needs as opposed to this beneficial to the town? Maybe a little bit, allow for a little bit more discussion as to, you know, from the other side, that it's consistent with local needs as opposed to just being solely beneficial to the town, this whole process. Just wondering if that might be a better term to use than, and it matches up, I think, with the state guidelines as to what.
If you want to put that in vote as amended, I think that they both imply the same.
Beg to differ, but in any event, that would be a recommendation of mine that instead of the term beneficial, it be consistent with local needs.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, interesting question and I just sort of want to weigh in on it a little bit. The LIP is, the point of emphasis that we have been taking in drafting these guidelines is that there's a great opportunity here once we reach our 10% threshold. And now it's not an automatic, I shouldn't say automatic, but it's, you know, the town's ability to deny outright or dramatically shape 40B applications is very limited when we're below our 10%. We're about to get above the 10%. And that gives the town a wonderful opportunity to engage with the developers early in the process so that we can have a dialogue about not just, I'm a little concerned that it would be really easy to say, well, the town has said it needs a lot of housing. We're providing housing. So we're done here, right? To oversimplify it. I know that's not what you're suggesting, but that's the concern of going too far in the direction of just saying, if it's in the town's interest because it's housing and it's affordable, then you should just approve it. We're looking at local initiative programs as an opportunity to shape housing projects to really make them to the benefit of the community and address our most pressing needs. So no doubt the wording could be massaged and be better. I just wouldn't want to be too narrow on it.
I, oh. I just want to make the comment that this has been out for a while and I'm a little concerned that we're at the 11th hour and we're asking for edits and changes. I think it's very well-written. I spent a ton of time on it. And I'm just concerned that we're trying to change it up at the last minute.
I agree. I'm pretty satisfied with Ms. Fish's answers to my questions and concerns. The only reason I bring it up is the LIP application is a negotiation between the developer and the Select Board, not the ZBA or the planning board. And I think it's only fair for us to be upfront with them of what our hopes and dreams are when it comes to these projects.
Absolutely. I agree.
That's why I mentioned it. And I'm sorry, I did mention it much too late.
And I think, and I think to your point, it is a negotiation and I think that Kim is the front person on the negotiations. Am I correct? So I think I definitely heard what you're saying and I think you brought up some really good points.
And I think she was on it as well, so I'm satisfied with the way it is.
And I would move that the board reestablishes the LIP Review Advisory Committee. I move that the board appoint, did I have a question? Yes.
For the record, Laura Moynihan, I'm the executive director of the Falmouth Housing Trust and would like to thank Kim for all her work on these guidelines. It's a long time coming and we appreciate everything that she's done. I would like to ask that if the board does go ahead with reestablishing the LIP Advisory Committee tonight and appointing a Select Board member, that the third element on the guidelines, that they be tabled for two weeks. that they be tabled for two weeks so that they can be posted publicly and that the public can provide written comment to the select board. There had, there, there, I did make some initial comments. The second draft, I just started reviewing yesterday, they, you know, they weren't posted on the Housing Resources site. I think there are people in the public that would like to comment on them, myself included, directly to you. My intention would be that, that the comments would be helpful to the guidelines and the process. And I can give you an example. There can be additional information like you've discussed tonight that can go in the guidelines to assist the LIP Advisory Committee, but also the developers to know upfront what's going to be required. Uh, one example is if the developer is requesting a waiver of the appraisal, that goes directly to the LIP application. That's something that the town has to consent to, so that should be discussed at the initial stage. Why is a waiver of the appraisal required? Because if the appraisal is not provided, then you could have an increased profit. That's something that the Advisory Committee would want to know. Is there going to be a three-bedroom waiver? LIP applications require three-bedroom units. If a developer is not providing three-bedroom units and it's a project over ten units, then the LIP Advisory Committee would want to know why that waiver is being requested. And I have some other points, so I'm not going to go on and on. But the point is that I think that these guidelines are very important to how this LIP process is going to proceed. We are not at ten percent yet. We don't know if we're going to be at ten percent, um, in the near future or not. And so you're going to have applications coming for, before you that are not, as, as Peter mentioned, when possibly the ten percent has been reached. So I think you have to take that into account as well, that in the near future, people will want to be using these guidelines. And the, and the examples of providing benefits to the town. Sometimes the benefit is, or may be, just the provision of housing. So in any event, I, I, I don't, I, I know I don't want to interfere with Kim's timetable and I know she wants to get this done and I know you want to get this done. But I think a couple of weeks after fourteen years of, you know, having, um, two thousand and seven or whatever number of years it is guidelines in place, that, that it, it can wait a couple of weeks. If anybody from the planning board wants to weigh in, if the Affordable Housing Committee wants to send comments directly to you, they can do that. They can review the, the most current draft posted publicly. So that would be my request, thank you.
Ms. Scott Price?
General question, I'm not sure who's the best person to answer this. When a developer is interested in proposing a, a LIP, are there state guidelines that they have access to or are there other guidelines other than just this?
Yes.
That would address some issues that are likely not in this?
Yes.
Okay.
These are just guidelines for the towns, so the details that were brought up can be, um, addressed at the meetings.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I have one more.
Go ahead, yes.
So Kim, isn't that the very recent for this board is to refine the way this is done and to amend as needed and get input? I mean, you don't expect this to go in written in stone and, and continue that way forever, do you?
Correct.
Thank you.
And discussions can be had at these committee meetings. Just because this says the criteria here doesn't mean that more criteria can't happen during a committee meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I, I'm curious what other board members may feel about Ms. Moynihan's suggestion there's no urgency necessarily unless, unless there is to, to, to allow for, you know, some more public input with respect to guidelines.
I, I would suggest there is urgency because we, we know that we have some potential LIP projects in the pipeline now. So my, my suggestion would be that the board might want to consider adopting the guidelines as proposed or with any amendments that you might wish to make tonight. And then certainly, they could be revised a month from now, a year from now, you know, whenever, whenever we like. We can, um, formally submit them to the ZBA and the planning board to get their input. But at least, you know, right now, the LIP guidelines that we have in place are really not workable. I think it would be very beneficial, this would be a huge improvement on what's on the books right now. It would be a, a big value to have this adopted tonight.
We did just have a LIP application our last meeting, right? The Walker Street property. So, I mean, there still is the ability to do some LIP applications at this point.
I think I'm suggesting these guidelines would put us in a much better position to have a more fruitful dialogue. And I, and I would say that actually in point of fact, the, the recently approved LIP was not at all what we're looking for. Not in the final product, the, the product is, is really very good. But what happened was we were delivered a product, you know, a project that was basically designed and done. Thankfully, it was a really good project, we were, you know, happy to support it. But these guidelines make it very clear, we want early conversations before they spend a lot of money on design and engineering to help shape the project, to make it better.
And to be involved earlier in the process is what I hear you say.
Okay, well, given that and given my response from Ms. Fish on my minor comments, I would move approval as it is and we can always adjust it later.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, quickly.
I didn't really intend to get into the substantive issues with these, with the guidelines as drafted, but I think it's important for the board to understand, first of all, you know, this is an important process that should be made public and it hasn't been made public. I mean, putting the guidelines in the board packet is not publishing the guidelines and asking for public comment. And that public comment can be very helpful at this stage. We all know that once guidelines are adopted, it's very difficult to backtrack and take things out. One of the, one of the substantive issues that I would comment on is that the guidelines impose or, or employ a procedure almost similar to a permit approval where the town manager is given the ability to approve the application before it's sent to the select board. The, the LIP Advisory Committee is an advisory committee and we've never seen that step added into guidelines where the town manager is the one who first gives the okay or the not okay on a LIP project. Now, the guidelines do say that if that's a negative recommendation from the town manager, that that can be overturned by the select board. But do we really want to have that kind of dialogue going on at the select board? So I, I don't know if, if you noticed that when you were reviewing them and, and with respect to the town manager. I, I, I expect that process could work, but the intention of the guidelines is that it's an advisory committee to the select board. Now we're imposing a type of approval process in the quote guidelines within the town manager himself before it gets to you. So in my written comments, that would be one thing that I would ask you to reconsider, that the, the LIP Advisory Committee meets, they look at the application, they make recommendations to your board, and then the application comes to you. And that's the way the, the process has always worked. So again, I apologize, I did not intend tonight to get into a lot of these issues. I was hoping that since this process has gone on for so long that the board would welcome help from the public on, on these guidelines and that I wouldn't have to speak as long as I have. But I thank you for your patience. And I also think that if we're talking about two weeks and the committee is appointed and the representative is appointed, then Ms. Fish can start her work scheduling meetings knowing that in two weeks' time, the board can adopt a set of guidelines that is incorporating Mr. Brown's comments, other people's comments, so we get a concise set.
I just had a comment. Madam Chair, just two comments. Is, is the Assistant Town Manager mentioned? Adoption of the review guidelines in the process as presented tonight puts us in a much stronger position. The other comment, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, and it, it, with all due respect to Attorney Moynihan, there was, you did present this, I think you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation, to the Affordable Housing Committee, right? Which is an open meeting. And there was some input given during that meeting, some of which perhaps was incorporated, some of which was not. So I, there, there was opportunity from the public, members of the public. And I believe Attorney Moynihan was at that meeting, the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and provided some input.
And some of her input has been incorporated. And, and all fairness to Attorney Moynihan, there is, had been some revisions that she did not see, but this is not something that needs to go for public input. I think it was out there for public input and these are select board guidelines that they make the decision on.
So I'm going to move that the board reestablishes the LIP Review Advisory Committee. I moved that the board appoints Bob Muscally to the LIP Review Advisory Committee.
We have a motion already, we have to retract that motion.
Retract?
Doug's already moved this.
Well, I just only moved the guidelines.
He only moved one, so, and then it got confusing, so I was reading all of them. And I move that the board adopts the local initiative application process and review guidelines as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I'll just make one more comment, that the past practice has pretty much been that the project is pretty well fully baked by the time we see it, regardless. So I think this is an improvement and I agree that we can update it again later as, and I'm sure now that we've put this in place, we're going to get more comments. So we can incorporate them.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I, I will vote in favor of, of this, but I do have concerns about some of the provisions. And I think I'm embarrassed to, to admit that I probably wasn't as, as diligent about it in the past as, as I was over the past weekend. But, uh, I intend to be a little bit more diligent going forward and may bring some suggestions back to the select board as we go forward. And thank you. And thank you, Kim, for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
It's a lot of work and I know you have a very busy schedule with a lot of other things, so thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Muscally, for your willingness to serve on that board.
Thank you for your, uh-
Okay, we're going to move to project eligibility letter for a forty-unit housing proposal at eighty-five Brick Hill Road. Mr. Renshaw, I'll start with you.
I'm going to turn it over to the town planner, Jed Cornoch. He's got, uh, the speaking points in front of him, Jed.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. For the record, again, Jed Cornoch, town planner. Before you tonight is a letter for project eligibility slash site approval for the, as you mentioned, project located eighty-five Brick Hill Road. It is a forty-unit rental application, ten of which of those units would be affordable. They'll be included in, all forty units would be included in two multi-unit apartment buildings, which would incorporate twenty-two studio units and then nine duplex buildings, which would have a mixture of three-bedroom units and four, uh, two-bedroom units. So a total of fourteen two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units. Uh, as you can see in the eligibility letter, we highlighted several key topics. Some of those are wastewater and the, um, need to incorporate or at least consider innovative alternative septic system. Transportation, including setting a sidewalk out to Brick Hill Road, identifying the fact that public transportation in that area would be a benefit. Um, and then also, or I should say lastly, I, I don't mind seeing the idea of tree clearing and getting a firmer idea about what can be saved and what can't. But as you know, the development and you may have seen the site plan, which incorporates development along the entire edge of the property. And so there's a bit of concern about that. So this project eligibility letter, you've come across these before. Uh, this is the first step in the process of an applicant applying for a comprehensive permit with the zoning board of appeals. So similar to what Kim was just describing, except this is the more traditional route. In the future, we might anticipate this type of project coming forward as a LIP. Uh, and you would have the opportunity to, as you just described or discussed, have the opportunity to have input on the design before it gets to this stage. At this stage, this is where they apply to Mass Housing for this eligibility. Town provides a comment letter. When they receive the formal letter from Mass Housing approving it, then they move into the next stage, which is applying for that comprehensive permit. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments from the board?
I would comment that, you know, at a hundred and twenty-five thousand per unit, it's probably on the high end of what I'd like to fund, but it is the right kind of project. So, I mean, it's, it's not? One point eight seven five?
That's the one, that's the five forty-six Main Street, this is the-
No, that's, that's the subsidy, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, this is the right one. So, I mean, it's a big investment for the town, but I think it's good, a good result for the town as well.
I, yeah, just to clarify, I don't believe that they've actually formally applied to the fund for funding just yet.
Okay.
But-
But it's listed here, that's the target, so.
They, they may have listed it in their application to Mass Housing, as their intent to apply.
Okay.
But they hasn't, we haven't received a formal application to date, as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
Kim is nodding her head no.
All right.
That's what I thought, okay.
I stand corrected, I apologize.
Okay. But, I mean, that's still the right number, just that it's not formalized.
Correct.
Okay. I would make one other comment about the construction. I wonder if it would be advisable, instead of putting all those condensers on the side of the building, it's going to be quite a lot of noise, I wonder if they would be better on the roof in between those peaks where the dormers are? It might be better for the residents? Of course, certainly not anything we can require, but just something I noticed.
Right. So that, that type of comment, if, if the board were so inclined, we could, you know, remember that comment for when the planning board considers it for when they come before a referral, when they formally apply.
Right. Those are my only comments.
Any other comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the draft project eligibility letter and submit to Mass Housing as presented.
I'll second Ms. Scott Price's motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application for four sixty-four Main Street.
I'm just getting, hi, I'm Kim, the housing coordinator. I am just getting some pictures up for the applicants, but I am available for any questions you may have.
Yes, but the other one will be-
Mentioned, yeah.
I'm going to open on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, the word is out.
Thank you.
You think?
Good evening, my name is Joe Valley with the Valley Group and with me is Christian Valley, also with the Valley Group. And we're here on behalf of Four Sixty-four Main Street LLC, the owners of the property currently Paul's Precision Auto. And the history is that Paul's Precision Auto has been an automotive repair business for as long as I can remember. The current owner bought the property two and a half years ago with the idea that he would continue with an automotive repair business on the property. When Mr. Cod was enacted, it became clear that perhaps there was a better use of the property than automotive repair business. And we set about the task of, of designing a fifteen apartment complex on the property, nine hundred square feet of commercial space to conform to the mixed-use concept of Mr. Cod. And so currently, we have fifteen apartments and nine hundred square feet of commercial. Our initial concept was that we would conform to Mr. Cod with four of the apartments being affordable, the balance being market. When, a year and a half ago, we set out to do that, we felt comfortable with that concept. Uh, as things turned out when we priced the building and when interest rates went from four to nine, it became, uh, not feasible as a, as a project. And so we rethought, we rethought the project and concluded that we would make all of them affordable. And our, and our concept is that we hope to be able to appeal to what we consider to be a segment of the market that has been shut out from affordable housing based on their income, their income being too high. And so they were unable to comply with eighty or a hundred percent median income. And so we've really targeted the community B for, hopefully, people who are earning enough income to comply. targeted the community B for, hopefully, people who are earning enough income to comply. Since we've undertaken the project, we've spoken with a number of people who are in the workforce segment in Falmouth, and who have been unable to comply with some of the affordable housing, but feel that based on their income, particularly dual family income, that they will be able to comply with this and would be eligible to live here. We have a total of nine one-bedroom homes and six two-bedroom homes. And we have eight washing machine, dryer, commercial laundromat in the front, on the frontage of the building, which will serve both the residents, and we hope the community as well. I'm going to ask Christian to give you a look at what we have, because he's technically better than I am.
Not better looking, though, Mr. Valley.
Okay, so this is the site. This right here is Peking Palace, number 452, Betsy's Diners, I believe, 457, Chapman Colne Gleason, excuse me, Chapman Funeral Home is here. As Joe mentioned, is...
Pull that mic down and pick up just a tad, please.
Yep, sorry. As Joe mentioned, it's an, right now, it's an existing auto repair shop, and the new project, the new building will be in this shape right here. Let's see if you have another. This is the existing building here, existing service station and parking. Just going to scroll down here, and this shows the new building with a commercial space to the front. We have plenty of parking on the site, right on Main Street, so it's very walkable to all the restaurants and town hall, town square. We do envision that, as Joe mentioned, the laundromat will be used both by the tenants and also by the public, so we've set aside some parking for that as well. This is a rendering of the building, the front of the building, so this is the front elevation that will face Main Street, and it'll run parallel, oh, sorry, excuse me, perpendicular down along the lot line. This just gives you a sense of the floor plans of the one- and two-bedroom units. The building is three stories. It will have a full basement just under the commercial space, and the rest of it will be mostly slab-on-grade.
So we've been before the Affordable Housing Committee and also the CPC, and this is our last stop. And we're happy to answer any questions anyone might have about the community.
You've had quite a bit of butter input, am I correct?
Yes.
Because you went out and chased it, am I correct?
Yes.
I love the project. I love the look of it. I think it's perfect, I think it will fit in, but I've also had the opportunity to look at it ahead of time, because I'm on the working group for affordable housing, so... Questions, comments? Mr. Mescalley?
Just a couple. With respect to parking, any thought about EV charging station of some sort on the property? You know, it's the first, you're the first person that's asked that question, and it's probably a good one, and we should consider it. I suspect there will be people with charging, the need for charging stations, and we'll see if we can figure out how to do that. And as far as the 120, 120% units, have you considered what kind of leases you'll be offering? I'm concerned about people who are going in, you know, with a one-year lease, and then being faced with a very large increase in year two, and now have to find themselves another place. So I've advocated in other settings that, not that we set what the rent would be, but that the developer would consider offering lease terms of one, two, or three years, and saying what that rent would be, and then someone can either take the one-year lease, or, you know, at least they'd have a better idea down the road, what they're looking at, so they wouldn't have to move in and then move out in a year because they can't afford it. So I'd like you to consider, in any event...
Thank you.
Offering lease terms that are longer than just one year. I assume there won't be lease terms shorter than one year?
No.
Thank you for that. I think that, you know, our experience is that the last thing we want to have happen is to have people move out, because it means refurbishing and the incremental rent that you might achieve over a period of a year, and it doesn't make any sense. So, our goal is going to be to keep people in here for a long time, it's to the owners' advantage to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Scott Price?
Just curious, other than the laundromat, any other thoughts of what the commercial space might be used for, or is all of that space going to be the laundromat?
It's all going to be laundromat. We looked at a number of alternatives, but because of the limitation of size, we felt that that was actually going to be the best use, because the town, I think, has a need for a nice laundromat.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
My comment I made on the previous project, by accident, with all the condensers on that one side, do you think that'll be loud? Do you think that's a consideration?
No, we really, we went over that with the neighbors, and there is a buffer, there's a fence there, there's actually a grade difference...
Yeah.
Between this site and where they are, and they're set back on the other side of the road, so they were comfortable at the end of our discussions that it would be okay. They didn't oppose that during our planning board hearing.
I was thinking more in terms of the tenants of this building.
This day and age, compressors are really surprisingly quiet.
Even with so many of them?
Yeah, it's all electric building.
Yeah, okay.
I think that that's the most logical place for them.
All right. I'll take it, you're no better than me.
Thank you. Looking for the motion.
You got the motion?
Bob, you have it, okay.
I moved that the board acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund grant $1,875,000 to XL 464 Main Street LLC to construct 15 rental units, four units deemed restricted at 80% AMI, and 11 units deemed restricted at 120% AMI in perpetuity at 464 Main Street, and authorize the town manager to execute a commitment letter and grant agreement setting forth the terms of the financial award to XL 464 Main Street LLC.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making them all affordable.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move into presentation. Resolution recognized the Cape Cod rights of nature. Dr. Betsy Gladfeller. Betsy, I have you posted for 10 minutes.
Hi, Bob. Thank you. This is... Kim, I'm here for the night.
Many talents.
Is this you? Yeah. You want to put it in? Yep. Pew, pew, pew. F5, thank you, Jed. This is why we work well together. You got the arrow, and then there's the...
System?
Yep. This will be the next slider here. You're welcome.
Oh, Earth Day was on the 22nd in 1970 as well, huh?
Yeah.
Black your teeth out.
So, but we're going to start a little bit earlier than Earth Day. We came all this way to explore the moon, and the most important thing is that we discovered the earth. Bob, you might be old enough to remember this, but most of you are way too young.
Thank you.
This was an amazing time, when the astronauts broadcast from the moon at Christmas Eve, 1 billion people around the world watched that broadcast.
I watched it.
You did? How, you must have been...
You were in the crib.
I was nine years old.
Were you?
Yeah.
I find that...
Oh, you were old, Doug. I didn't know that.
Old as can be.
So this iconic photograph, Earthrise, resulted in a paradigm shift in how we view our home planet. The realization, we're all in it together on this little fragile sphere. Earthrise, along with Rachel Carson's Silent Spring, and environmental catastrophes in the late 1960s, including oil spills and rivers bursting into flames, gave rise to the development of Earth Day. Earth Day was April 22nd. I guess you must remember that, too.
No, it's right here, it's written.
Oh, that's right. April 22nd, 1970, and 10% of the US population took place and took part in Earth Day celebrations. I was a, I'm older than you.
No, I didn't do that.
I graduated...
I went to school.
Didn't your school do it?
Yeah, we probably did something, I don't really recall exactly.
Probably did, because I graduated, I was a high school, prep school teacher at the time. I'd just graduated from college.
Yeah.
So, the demonstration was against the impacts of 150 years of industrial developments, and this is cut off, which had...
Excuse that, bud.
But left...
A growing legacy of serious human health impacts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We can scroll and listen.
So, in that year, in 1970, the Congress acted a lot quicker in those days than happens now. But we had the creation of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and also the National Environmental Education Act was passed, the Occupational Safety and Health Act, OSHA, was passed, and the Clean Air was passed. And two years later, the Clean Water was passed. In 1972, Massachusetts also passed the Wetlands Protection Act, the first state in the Union to do that. And in 1979, Falmouth had the wetlands, Falmouth Wetlands Bylaw was passed, and we were the first town on the Cape to pass it. I have to, since Peter's here, I have to say that we beat, we beat Sandwich by one month. But many of the others were much later, and the most recent was 19, I think, 1911, These are 50-year-old laws, and times have changed. We have, we're all, we all recognize this is a current environmental crisis. It's in the last 50 years, a large part due to our home scientific institutions, which are internationally recognized, but it's the atmosphere, the listosphere, the earth, the hydrosphere, the waters, the oceans, and the biosphere, all interact together. Biospheres, all the living things on earth. And they're acting at a variety of spatial and temporal scales. So, another paradigm shift in more recent years is to recognize that we're part of nature. But actually, after listening to the rest of the meeting tonight, the fact is, Falmouth already subscribes to this. The housing subscribes to it in terms of, one of the things is they ask that areas that haven't been developed, woods that haven't been cut, be maintained. It's important for people of all times, of all ages, to spend time in nature, even if it's your own little house plant, or your backyard, to be inspired, to find joy, to appreciate, and to be respectful. And in order to preserve this for the next generation, Falmouth has done a good job of providing many opportunities for children to be out in nature. There've been more, even in the last 10 years than there had been, and also to volunteer. And one of the things I always like to point out is the combination of art, all the arts, and nature. So, the resolution that you have, the rights of nature, is, one of the groups that promotes that is the United Nation Harmony with Nature, and they've worked on multiple rights of nature proclamations, laws, and constitutional language. I just want to point out Tommy Zein was the one who introduced us to people from the UN rights of nature, and he organized meetings over the past four months with people who realize that we, as a, as a community, want to recognize that we're, we're part of nature, and we have a responsibility to care for nature. The two people from Harmony in Nature from the UN who helped us with this is a young conservation biologist, Callie Veelen Turf, who's now down doing research, turtle research down in Ecuador, and Marcia Motry, who's a retired town council from Santa Monica. And in the dozen or so meetings we've had with her, I mean, it's very clear, clear that what she has faced, and, or what people face in Florida is very, Florida, in California is very similar to the same problems we hear, have here. The housing problems, the limited amounts of land, and so forth. Finally, I want to thank everybody in Falmouth. This was actually a great meeting to have, to see the aquaculture requirements, aquaculture. We have regenerative farm groups in Falmouth. I think most of the boards think about, how can we do it better? How can we preserve, well, Jed just said it today, in terms of, is it really necessary to clearcut every lot? Of course, from a, Doug would tell us, from a construction point of view, it's a lot easier to build if all the trees are gone. But the fact is, every tree, every older tree plays a really important role. I remember one of the things that Chuck told me is, when trees start to leaf out, fernal pools drop in elevation. I mean, fernal pools have groundwater, right? So, trees are really important, our trees, our sand plain grasslands, our wetlands, they're all important in storing carbon. I mean, you think of conservation land as being important to get out, to be in nature, but they're playing really vital roles for here in town, and basically globally. Storing carbon, reducing nitrogen, and...
Providing habitat?
Providing habitat, providing space for stormwater. There's one more thing, which of course I've forgotten. And the last thing I want to mention, so this is an opportunity for Falmouth to get, I should say, in those, in those meetings with Callie and Marcia, we also met with people from Warren, and Barnstable, and Mashpee, who would like to put this in front of their towns as well. So this is an opportunity for Falmouth to yet again show environmental leadership by being the first town to adopt the Cape Cod Rights of Nature resolution. We hope our colleagues from our neighboring towns will follow suit, and eventually, all the towns on the Cape will join us to recognize the rights of nature. will join us to recognize the rights of nature. Finally, I want to close with a line I read from an essay this morning about Earth Day. What might hap...what might happen if we remembered that we're part of this wild world and let that understanding and humility guide every choice that we make?
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I did. So, this obviously seems like a great idea. I'm wondering why we haven't done this before. Was there a catalyst to make this happen now?
Doug wasn't born yet.
Doug wasn't born yet? Well, there are a couple...there are a couple of catalysts. So, here in town, the catalyst was a 40B. That's how we heard about it. But there is another Rights of Nature, and the first here on the Cape. And it was the youth group from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe have a Rights of Herring. And I went to their presentation last summer. So...
Thank you.
We're hoping to continue to do some projects with the youth group, with the Wampanoag youth group.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Comment. There's a small typo. Therefore is missing an E at the end.
Okay.
That's how they spelled it in 1970.
Is it? I wouldn't know. I wasn't there.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Would someone like to read the resolution so you know what you're voting on?
I'd be happy to, if you'd like.
It's right here, Mr. Brown, if you want to. Do you want to read it right there?
Resolution: Recognizing Cape Cod Rights of Nature. Whereas the communities of Cape Cod owe their centuries of existence to their natural setting, the miles of coastline, the natural aquifer, the climate-moderating Gulf Stream, the surface waters, and the abundance of land and sea. From the earliest residents to Wampanoag and Nossett, through today's, the Cape people are deeply attached to this life and spirit-sustaining land. Understand their dependency upon the environment and work collaboratively to protect it. Whereas despite these efforts, local terrestrial and aquatic species are in decline, and habitats are being fragmented and destroyed. The Cape's community of life is being destroyed. Residents mourn the loss and are united in their determination to stop it. Whereas the Massachusetts State Constitution establishes in Article 97 that people have a right to a clean and healthy environment. But that right is too often ignored and sacrificed to current political exigencies and societal needs. Consequently, the Cape's people are calling upon their local governments to recognize their constitutional right by better protecting the environment. And whereas, in this time of global climate disruption and environmental collapse, the call for stronger environmental protection is worldwide. And one major response has been the mass adoption of legal enactments recognizing that humanity is part of nature, is responsible for nature's care, and should recognize nature, the entire interdependent community of life on earth as having the right to exist, persist, regenerate, and be restored. Whereas, this understanding of our human relationship to nature, long shared by Earth's first people, has been incorporated into federal, state, and local laws around the world, including here on Cape Cod. And it is supported by a rapidly growing number of institutions, religious groups, and political leaders, both locally and globally. Whereas, supporting this movement and aligning local law and policy with the understanding that nature must be respected as an entity with rights will help protect Cape Cod and will assist effectuation of our constitutional right to a clean and healthy environment. Now, therefore, the Select Board of Falmouth, Massachusetts, hereby recognizes the Rights of Nature of Cape Cod, resolves to effectuate those rights to the full extent of its authority in order to protect the welfare of life on Cape Cod and thereby effectuate our constitutionally guaranteed right to a clean and healthy environment, thereby protect our own and our children's and descendants' welfare. Signed Nancy Robbins Taylor, Chair, Falmouth Select Board, April 22nd, 2024. Thank you.
Any other discussion amongst the board? Here's your motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're going to move on, discuss and consider the approval of a police department traffic control official policy. And we have our chief here. And I'm going to apologize for keeping you guys so late. I know today's been a crazy day.
Madam Chair, real quick, I want to preface some of the chief's comments. I asked Chief and Lieutenant DeCosta to be here this evening to answer any questions. As you all know, there's a really enormous need for competent traffic control and traffic details throughout the town. The upcoming summer season, we know all too well. There's...this need just expands. The civilian traffic control official would be able to provide traffic detail coverage, kind of a pool, if you will, of traffic coverage, when no full-time or reserve police officers are available to perform that function. Madam Chair and Board, importantly, the traffic control officials, as we're proposing tonight, are not sworn police officers pursuant to general law. They have no authority to issue citations, affect seizures, serve warrants, and other process, make arrests, or perform any other function of a sworn police officer, except those duties specifically described in the policy. I wanted to also add that the policy... I want to thank the chief and the lieutenant for their work on drafting it. The chief has some experience on a similar policy in Westboro, I believe it was.
Yes.
Town Council and the Human Resources Director completely vetted, worked, collaborated with the chief and Lieutenant DeCosta on this draft, which is included in your packet. There's several bullet points that kind of describe what we're trying to accomplish. But in general sense, we know, we realize there's a huge need for safe and competent traffic details to cover those areas where we don't have a police officer available. And this policy, I want to commend the chief. I think it's a great idea. Would provide that pool of labor, so to speak, having a very specific skill set and very limited powers. Chief, anything you want to add?
So, I just want to really thank Lieutenant DeCosta. He did a lot of work on this. I think it's better than the policy I had previously. It's taken care of our retirees. When you turn 65, you no longer have police powers. So, now they're civilian flaggers, in essence. So, we're taking care of our former employees. And also our CSIs, our Community Service Representatives, we're going to have them do details. They're kind of doing it now, you know, directing traffic on Main Street and at the different beaches. It's a real...we're talking about housing here. And we have some CSIs that can't come back to us this year because they can't afford to live here. Where now, having this added income, they'll be able to hopefully find, you know, a place to live, you know, down here. So, we think it's a definite need. I think Falmouth Road Race and some of the events, we had 20, 25 flaggers. This gives us a little bit more control over them. Moving forward, making sure their training is up to date, CPR, first aid, that those types of things, that's really all they're going to need. They're not going to really need to be post-certified police officers now because they're civilian employees. And quite frankly, I think it's very important that we take care of those that are still able to assist us. And you'll see in the policy, there are certain events in town that we're going to mandate they help us with because it's all hands-on deck, as you know, for several events over the summer. So, I'm hoping that you approve this. And moving forward, the goal is going to be eventually, with Lieutenant DeCosta's assistance, we're going to put all our policies online so the folks at home can take a look at them. We want to be completely transparent. And we do believe this is a real need for us. We're still very short-staffed. Even when we're at full staff, I can tell you, when we conduct the staffing study, you know, we're going to need to add, you know, some police officers over time. So, this is augmenting our staff, and I think it's a huge need.
Questions? Mr. Muscally?
Will the officers have communication devices to be able to communicate with your police officers?
Yes. So, they'll have portable radios. We're going to try to assign them one so they have their own. But if they have to, they'll share them, depending on how many we have. Like our CSIs, our Community Service Representatives, they have their portable radios, so they'll have one. And most of our specials are also issued them.
Thank you. Mr. Zelensky?
Chief, just two quick questions. What's the uniform of the day for the...
They're going to basically look like the CSIs. On, they're going to have a ball cap, and it's going to have traffic on it. No badges. You know, basically, just like our Community Service Representatives.
Is there any...is there any ongoing training for these, monthly training? Or once they're certified, they're certified?
Once they're certified, they're certified. You know, we'll send them to a DOT traffic control class of those that don't have the experience. But the vast majority of them are going to be retirees. So, they've been doing it for 40, 30, 40 years.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's great. I like how you've put the order of how they get called up so they know what to expect. Good.
Awesome.
People like rules.
Yeah.
Yes.
I like rules.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the consideration for the approval of a police department traffic control official policy.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, we're going to move into business number seven. Approve the resubmission of an application filed by Amvets Falmouth Post 70, Inc., 336 Palmer Ave., Falmouth, for a change of manager and a change of officers-directors to its all-alcoholic beverages nonprofit club license. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you indicated, this is a resubmission of an application, a change of manager application filed by Mr. Guy Patierno. And I apologize for mispronouncing that last name. It had been approved by the Select Board Licensing Authority back on September 29th of 2022. However, as I understand it, looking through the records, the appointment of the officers of the club had expired, and there were some delays and challenges obtaining the ABCC requested updated application form. On March 18th of this year, Town Council sent a letter, a copy of which is included in your packet, to both the Amvet president, Mr. Patierno, as well as to the Amvet vice president, Mr. Roy Rose Jr., indicating again the need for Amvets Falmouth Post 70, Incorporated, to refile with the ABCC an updated change of manager and change of officers' app, application. And again, this is due to the state ABCC having rejected their previous earlier applications in February of 2023 and May of 2023 due to some corporate filing information being outdated at the time of submission, as well as, as was explained to me, some ambiguity in the application concerning the names of the current officers. So, to get everything cleared up, the Town Council issued a letter to both the president and vice president asking that they resubmit. On or about March 30th, Mr. Guy Patierno, the Amvet's president, submitted the revised change of manager and change of officers' application, included in your packet, per those instructions contained within the Town Council's letter. And Madam Chair and Board, I'm recommending the Select Board approve the resubmitted application filed by Amvets Falmouth Post 70, Incorporated, 336 Palmer Ave., for a change of manager and change of officers-directors to its all-alcoholic beverages nonprofit license.
Questions or comments?
Were they operating during this interim without a proper application?
That I do not know. I didn't know.
You did not?
I don't know.
Question? Yes. So, was this not on the consent agenda because it's a reapplication, a resubmission?
That's my understanding, because it's a reapplication.
If you're ready for a motion, I would move approval.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve the resubmitted application filed by Amvets Post 70, Incorporated, 336 Palmer Ave., Falmouth, for a change of manager and change of officers-directors to its all-alcoholic beverages nonprofit club license.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into license renewals. We have a 2024 seasonal and spring annual. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my recommendation, there's a list of these annual licenses and spring license renewals posted in the board packet tonight. I wanted to note, with the exception... I'm recommending approval of these licenses. But I wanted to note one particular issue with regards to, if you refer to your packets under the lodging house license category, the Frederick William House located at 594 Palmer Ave.
Yes, I'd like to hold that.
We just were made aware late last week that there's some ongoing zoning issues, violations on the property. We consulted with Town Council. Town Council is advising us, advising the Select Board to continue on with the renewal of the license, but to put the owner and operator on notice that if these zoning violations... And it has to do with the occupancy. I believe they're permitted for five guests. And part of the dispute and part of the zoning violation that's currently being investigated, there's evidence that perhaps there's upwards of seven guests lodging there. So, that's the most significant. Then there's some vegetative buffer zoning violation that's currently being investigated. At any rate, we did consult with Town Council, and she is advising that the Select Board proceed with approving the license, putting the owner-operator on notice that any continued violations of these zoning issues could result in the owner-applicant, the applicant being called back to the...in front of the Select Board for revocation or suspension of that business license.
Yeah, this is concerning to me. I agree that we can move forward on the license. But it is concerning that they have not been in compliance and that the board will need to inform them that if they don't comply immediately and going forward, that we would send out a notice of violation right away. And I think people need to know that we are watching and that they need to be in compliance with their license.
Madam Chair, but my recommendation...I'm sorry.
I just noticed an audience member had their hand up.
Yes. About this issue?
Yes.
Yes.
Apologize.
Go ahead.
Few short. My printer jammed at 6:15 today. My name is Jonathan Stronach. I live at 600 Palmer Ave. with my wife. I appreciate...I know that this isn't usually an opportunity for comment. So, I appreciate it's very important to me that I can have this heard. And I know it's late, so I will do my best to be brief. Myself and the other butter, Jerry, unfortunately, I had to leave a few minutes ago. We spoke at a ZVA hearing April 13th, 2023. This was an application to add another guest unit to the bed and breakfast. Myself and the other butters voiced our concerns about performance standards and compliance. And based on those comments, the application was withdrawn. A board member from the ZVA suggested that we speak to the building commissioner. Following that action, if you look at page three of your packet, a complaint violation was sent in April 25th stating that the parking lot required... To change the parking lot, it required approval from the planning board. Unfortunately, after that, the parking lot continued to be extensively expanded and redesigned to the point of actually, two days ago, excavators, heavy machinery on site, once again, expanding the footprint. If you look in those pictures, that's actually taken from my kitchen window so you can understand how it's an issue for us. I'm asleep. Page four, following in August 29, a cease and desist order was sent at the April 13th hearing. The applicant was stating that they currently were renting seven units and were asking permission to go to eight. The special permit was for five, and that has not changed. A cease and desist order was sent, which was followed by an appeal. The appeal at the ZVA was continued to February 1st, at which...
Let me interrupt you, sir. I'm not sure that this is within our purview.
Yeah. The board's been asked tonight to consider the approval of the annual license. This is a matter currently under investigation, and there's some disputes between the property owners, the butter. So, yeah, I would recommend not.
So, I don't think that we need to...we can even get into this.
It might be outside of our purview because it's a ZVA.
It's the ZBI. It's planned. It's not really ours.
Madam Chair, if I could make one clarification, and I may have misspoken. I just want to be clear for the record. Town Council has recommended that the Select Board warn the owner that they're aware, Select Board is aware, that the business is not being operated in accordance with the Select Board issued license. I may have made a reference to the special permit. special permit. This is actually in association with the Select Board issued license. They're operating out of the, beyond the scope. It says five guests?
Five rooms, right?
Five rooms.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the distinction I want to make. It's-
And that's the only piece that we can rule on.
What does your license do?
It's a lodging license. Sure allows them to-
Educate me. I mean, for how long a period of time? It's an annual license? And when does it expire? I mean, when, when does this particular, when would this start? It's my question. The real reason for my, my question is, do we have to act on it this evening?
I believe that we need to act on it this evening, and I believe that we have been advised that the recommend, that the license can be renewed, but that the Select Board use this opportunity to let this business know that it is not being in accord, being run in accordance with its license currently.
It would be a much stronger statement to the owner if we didn't renew the license. I appreciate that counsel-
It's contrary to what we've been advised.
I think council said we could, we can-
She recommends that the license be removed.
Well, that's not quite what, what Mike said, so I just want to-
I have it right here.
Okay, I don't.
Ms. Galli, I do. This was, she recommends that the license be renewed, but that the Select Board use this as an opportunity to warn the owner.
And also-
And if it's under appeal, we don't want to get in the weeds on that as a town body if it's already under appeal. Is the applicant even here?
Madam Chair, if I may-
Yes, please.
So, yeah, Mr. Zalinski's question is sort of on point. From my conversations with Town Council, it was her advice to renew the license because even though it is a renewal to, to not renew without any notice or hearing to the, to the applicant was, was, she did not advise that the board do that. You could put the owner on notice, and you could hold a future hearing with notice to the applicant to give, have, give them an opportunity to state their case, give the Butters and the complainants an opportunity to state their case, and then consider action on the license at that time. And it is a seasonal license, so it is time sensitive. I believe it does expire. I apologize, I don't have the exact date, but my understanding it is time sensitive. It might be, you know, it might be dated in early May, that the seasonal license. I think they're looking, I guess what it is is, they can't begin renting this year without the license, and the season's coming around where they want to rent, so it is time sensitive.
That's your man.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I assume that you've spoken at the ZBA.
I spoke at the ZBA.
Okay, so you understand that we, we may be sympathetic or not, but there's nothing that can be done by this board while it's under appeal?
Yes, my, my purpose here was-
I noticed your wife's, you know, you're anxious and you're upset. There are certain things that have to play out in order for this to line up, okay?
Sure, and that's understood, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And really, it was pages 13 and 16, the first enforcement letter for renting the College of Seven 2007. People have been trying to enforce this for 20 years. I can't go another 20 years living the way that we're living. And that is my urgency here. I appreciate you considering.
Go ahead. So is there an opportunity to bring the applicant before us at some point to have a discussion about this?
Yes. If there's continued violations, we can issue a notice of violation and have them brought back in front of the board-
Okay.
-for consideration of rescinding the license or suspending.
I know I won't be here for much longer, but I would, I would think that that's something we may want to do. I would agree.
Can I ask a procedural question? I'm trying to learn as much as I can as a new property owner and new resident town about procedures. If there are opportunities for public comment, is that something that, I guess, how would I keep up to date on, on those things? I want to make sure I don't miss anything.
Continue to go to the zoning board and follow the case through its appeal.
The appeal's been withdrawn.
Pardon?
The appeal's been withdrawn.
If there is an ongoing violation on the property, it would be considered in a public hearing, is my understanding, right, which would be properly noticed and advertised. So I encourage the Butter to kind of monitor the situation, if you will. You know, our building commissioner's office would be the one that would be investigating any, any repeat or ongoing violation.
So it would be complaint driven?
It would be, yeah, that's what, it would be complaint driven to trigger that.
If I could just comment?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the notify me service in the town hall?
I've, I've heard people speak about that. I can certainly-
You can do a Google search for notify me, Falmouth, Massachusetts, and it'll bring you to the town's website, and it'll show all the different committees, and you just go down through the line and check them off, and you can be notified by email or text or both. And then, once you sign up for it, you close it, they're going to send you an email. You have to confirm it. You won't get the notifications unless you pay attention to that confirmation email. All you do have to do is reply to confirm it. And then every time there's a meeting, you'll get a notification. You can put it on your schedule.
And then you, you go, actually go in and look at the agenda.
Right.
And then you'll know whether you want to be there.
Thing is on there.
In terms of a complaint, I'm assuming there's some town procedures about notifying what action is or is not taken.
It would be, the, the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer. So if you see a, something that you feel needs to be addressed again, now that this has been set in motion, he just told you how it plays out. They're going to be warned if they're in violation, and you go and report it, and it, and it's, and I know it's exacerbating for you, but that's how it's played, that's how you have to do this. It has to go through his office if it's an enforcement issue. If it gets approved tonight, forgive me if, if I'm incorrect with this, if it gets approved tonight for, for the license, and then you see they're still in violation after the issuance of the license, the Town Council has just explained that after this is issued, if there are any more violations and they're investigated and found it, then they can be restricted or revoked. Am I correct?
That's correct. And if I may, you can submit a complaint, a complaint, if you find a violation of the Select Board's license to rent to five guest rooms, you could submit a complaint to the Select Board by email.
In essence, in essence, what they've done, Town Council has advised us to draw a line in the sand for them, for you to then have them step over or not.
Okay, understood. And I, and we do have to get by, to look after here. The complaint was sent to the Select Board email in May. I will be sure to resend it, and hopefully this is a matter that can get resolved sooner or later.
But it's not to the Select Board. You have to send it to the building commissioner as a complaint.
Okay.
Well, copy, copy the Select Board. I would recommend copying the Select Board, so my office is aware.
I will resend that.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so let's go back. License renewals, you have them as posted. Does anyone-
So my recommendation, Madam Chair, would be the Select Board approve the annual licenses as posted in the agenda tonight.
I'll move that.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Miss Galli, did-
I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, we will move into minutes. Review and vote to approve the minutes of the following meetings.
I noticed on 4/10, in consent on the last page, they made a note, page six, reference was to Nan, and I don't know what the name was, but it was supposed to be Nan Logan.
Okay.
On, on the minutes of October 30th, 2023, they had me listed as present. I was actually out of the country on October 30th, 2023, so I was not present. As much as I would have liked to have been there, I was not able to be there.
Could have got away with it.
I thought we channeled you in.
No, you channeled Douggy on that. That was the one that you held at the-
Senior Center?
The senior center.
Oh, that you called.
That I actually, as you remember.
He actually emailed me from Italy to say, where are we doing this, and why am I confused? Okay. And that was October 30th, Mr. Miss Galli? Okay, so we should mark you as absent.
Absent.
Okay. Anything else?
I just would comment, I hope that we're getting caught up. I keep thinking that we're getting caught up, and then all of a sudden we have these leftover minutes from way back when.
Madam Chair, I actually asked the office manager, Diane, that question this morning, and I'm told that this is kind of the last set that, we're catching up.
Okay, great.
It is a-
Just, just for the record, I would abstain from the minutes on June 27th, 2022, as I wasn't a member at that time.
Okay. June 27th, 2022?
Right.
Okay, so you're abstaining on voting on them. Got it.
I'm voting on that.
Yep.
Why don't I, why don't we vote?
Okay, do I have a motion to move them?
I'll move them.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I would comment otherwise, the minutes were well done.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have ayes across the board except for Monday, June 27th, where Mr. Miss Galli has abstained from voting. So that's a four. All right. Let's look at executive session, February 12th. Do we have that one in here?
Yes.
Posted via email, right?
Yeah, it was in a separate email.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at that?
I did. It was fine. I don't know if it should be released, though. It's a personal, personnel matter, right?
But the person's name was-
I'll call those.
So the name is redacted?
Redacted, absolutely.
So it's okay to release?
So we can release? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve and to release?
I would move approval and release.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, town manager supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, so as you all probably know, last week, Wednesday, we had an issue with a traffic detour. Honestly, it was a complete fiasco. It was involving some construction currently off of Lantern Lane, the Liberty Green project. It was a sewer connection. Weeks and weeks ago, detour plans were reviewed by the public safety agencies, the police departments, and the fire rescue departments. I was unaware of the closure, and we started fielding complaints right at about 10 o'clock on Wednesday morning last week. The purpose for me bringing this up tonight is that it's not acceptable. We need to do better with how we get information out. There's a complete lack of coordination and communication to the public, so it's on my office to make sure in the future we do do better. I had a conversation with Peter McConerty, the DPW director, and I wanted to go over some, real quickly, some, some items that we're going to be doing so that in the future we do a better job. Public Works is implementing, effective last week Friday, the following for all future traffic closures. As you all know, we have a pretty effective rave messaging system. Falmouth rave messaging, email, text messages, and phone calls will be sent out as soon as possible. We're going to be placing bulletins placed on the town website under the news flash, which is a pretty prominent location on the town website, that outline the limits and duration of the detour as soon as possible. One of the issues, and rightfully so, that residents and business owners were upset about last week was the fact that there was no advance notice. Again, we need to do a better job. So Public Works, working in conjunction with Mr. McConerty and a private contractor, if there is one involved, we are proposing to place electronic message boards 72 hours, three days in advance of the roadwork, detailing the dates and the duration of the proposed work. Again, I mentioned the Falmouth rave messaging system. We're looking to activate that 24 hours in advance of the work. I'm told a lot of times, and this is no excuse, but a lot of times with private contractors, they say they're going to start a job, and then they get back at the last minute, and it doesn't get started. So it's a little problematic in terms of posting signs, quite honestly, based on last week and the outrage, and again, justifiably. I'd rather err on the side of caution and go the extra miles to make sure that these, these ads get placed, put out. Rave, we can geofence, I believe, certain areas geographically to send those messages out to. The bottom line is, what happened last week shouldn't have happened. This was a planned, well, well-reviewed in advance operation. This was not a wastewater leak. This was a sewer connection. So we had advance notice. Again, I mentioned the bulletins under new flash. And also importantly, going forward, myself, Peter, working with the police department and fire rescue, are going to do a better job taking a look at detour routes, considering the town's needs, but also balancing that against sensitive neighborhood needs, and looking at alternate detour routes, considering road geometry and capacity to handle, the traffic that's expected to be rerouted and detoured. Heavy truck traffic along the routes that were being redirected last week was probably not the best idea. So we learned that lesson. And again, I'm reporting this to you tonight to make sure that the Select Board and the community is aware that we understand, we, we drop balls, and we're going to do better going forward. And these are the processes that we put in place. And that's all I have.
I have a copy of the supplemental report.
This is actually just an email.
Oh.
I was going off of it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any Select Board reports? Mr. Miss Galli?
Yes, two. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the Falmouth Cultural Council grantee reception. As I think the board will remember, the town gave $10,000 to the cultural council. That, together with $8,400 from Mass Arts Council and $1,600 in private donations, allowed the council to award 26 grants, 23 of which are, are free programs that are available to the public. There's a very comprehensive list on the council's website as to the various programs. They involve our students and, you know, a number of other organizations. So it's really, did a wonderful job, and I was happy to be there. On April 17th, I attended my first meeting on the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority and learned about their new DART program, Smart DART expansion, which will be coming out in, in June, and will allow people to utilize the dial, dial ride technology that the authority has. They are going very heavy into electric, electric vehicles, and they have pushed out their free fare program on February 1, and for, for people who are the elderly and, and disabled, and they have had almost 800 adults, older adults and over 200 people with disability, register for the program and take advantage of that free program. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Miss Galli. Very informative. Mr. Brown?
I got to attend the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association along with Mr. Miss Galli a week ago on Friday, and we had Senator Moran, Representatives Flanagan, Gizaros, and Diggs all there to update us on what they're working on. And Senator Moran was informing us about many billions of dollars that are in the upcoming bond bills, which I did ask her, I said, are those in the budget, or bond bills? And it's mostly in bond bills. We know how that goes. And I reminded her that the Veterans Center had a grant, which I think came out of one of those bond bills for $90,000 to buy solar panels. And then the governor came along and realized that they had a budget problem and pulled back $45,000, and the panels were already on the roof. So hopefully that Senator Moran can go back to the trough and get some of that money back, because I don't know what else those people are going to do over there. I attended with Mr. Renshaw the Wacoite intermunicipal agreement with Mashpee and Sandwich at the Mashpee Town Hall, just to kind of briefly introduce ourselves and agree to, I think we agreed to monthly meetings, or quarterly, excuse me. It was going to be monthly, but we said, what's the rush? Quarterly will probably keep us all informed as to what's going on. And then this week, the Ed Marks Building Committee resumed its work with the final plans coming through on the building, and they're reviewing the plans, make sure everything that was intended was included. So they're going to be back in action, and we're going to probably hear from them sometime in the near future. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Bob Price?
I don't have anything to report.
Child update? Bill Lawson. Mr. Zalinski?
I attended virtually the CCMPO meeting, monthly meeting today, and I urge residents to, to go on the CCMPO website and review those meetings and their charts and graphs and reports, too various to, to, to describe in a simple selectment's report. But they give great information. I urge everyone that's interested to go on that website and review the, the meetings.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I did do something interesting.
Go ahead.
The Wampanoag tribe had an Honor the Earth Day at their tribal lands in Mashpee over the weekend, and so I attended that. And there were a lot of organizations from Falmouth that were there. So there was, the Year End Diversion Project was there presenting, you know, about what they're working on. There was the Woodwell Climate Research Center and so on. So it was nice to see that even though it was a Mashpee event, there was a lot of community engagement there.
Great.
I volunteered Saturday with Alan Robinson and Mary Reither to collect textiles, and that was just a hoot and a blast. And you-
that was just a hoot and a blast, and you would not believe how busy it was.
Yeah.
And how they filled up, I think, two trailers. It was unbelievable, but it was actually quite fun.
I, I went Sunday and threw a few bags in, and the thing was pretty full.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. Anything else from the board?
Can I ask, Mr. Brown, can you mention the Arbor Day information again, because I couldn't find that email?
It's at Chivrick's Pond over here. You know where the Quarter Deck Restaurant is, and behind, if you go down the end of Post Office Road, straight across, Chivrick's Pond, and then to the left, there's a little path that goes through from our new principal parking lot-
Yep.
-to the Lawrence School. So right on that corner, they're going, they've been doing some tree clearing, and they're going to make a little park sitting area, and there's going to be a little walkway out into the pond.
And that's on Friday?
Friday.
Friday at 10 a.m., I believe. I can look right now, I have it on my calendar.
Where are people congregating at that, at that point, or over on the other side of the-
I believe we're supposed to meet right there.
Okay, great, thank you.